Mr. One, two, one, two. Still one, two, three, testing one, two, three, four, testing YouTube feed. Thank you.
Parliament, I'll just give you all time to settle down. But I just want to welcome in particular the department who is online, just so that they know that we will be commencing in a couple of minutes. So to settle down, make yourselves comfortable and we'll start shortly. Thank you. Nunka, I am Benedikt van Mynen. I am the Chair of the Premier and Constitutional Matters Standing Committee here at the Legislature. We really just want to welcome everybody here today. What's going to happen? Please come in. What's going to happen this morning is we are doing the public participation on the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill, as well as the Public Service Amendment Bill. We have the department online who are going to present. But before we get there, I just want to quickly start the meeting formally. As I say, I'm Benedikt van Mynen. I am the Chair of the Standing Committee. To my left is my procedural officer. Then we have some other members of the Standing Committee who are just going to introduce themselves for the record.
Good morning, Chair. I'm Leon van Beek, a member of the committee.
Good morning, chairperson, all members and members of the community. My name is Wendy Kaiser Philander, and I'm a member of this committee.
We have received apologies from a number of members of the committee, being Member Heron, Member Said, Member Walters, and Member Stevens. Before we really kick this off, I'm actually informing Member Stevens is online. Actually, there I can see Member Stevens online. Member Stevens, do you want to introduce yourself?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, members, and good morning, community. I'm Member Stevens, and I'm a member of this committee. Thank you, Chair.
Just to explain how public participation works, this is national legislation which has been proposed. But because parliament is a transparent structure, we obviously then have hearings with the public so we can hear everyone's voices and opinions and inputs on this legislation. So these public hearings have been advertised, and they have been advertised in various newspapers, including the Argus, the Berger, Wuyokani. And the Public Outreach and Education Unit has informed the public of these hearings. All mayors' offices, municipal managers, to mod centers, Tucson centers, community developments, and universities have been made aware as well of these hearings. So I'm not sure if they're ready yet. We do have, like I say, we're going to be doing a brief overview of the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill and the Public Service Amendment Bill by the department here online. And I want to welcome Ms. Rosita Amadas, Senior Legal Officer, and Mr. Kuben Govender, who's the Director of Public Administration, Norms and Standards. And then if you have questions of clarity, we can also put that to them for feedback. So I think if they are ready, let's hand over to them, and they can present the bill this morning. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, honourable committee members, members of the public, colleagues, and all present. My name is Rosita Amadas. We also seek to also acknowledge and greet our acting director general, Mr. Valivukela, who is also here. I will be presenting or giving a overview of the Public Service Amendment Bill and the Public Administration Amendment Bill. I just want to confirm with Chair, who I proceed then to continue with the presentation on specifically the Public Service Amendment Bill. I will do the presentation in that regard, and my colleague, Mr. Kuben Govender, he will be doing the presentation on the Public Administration Amendment Bill, just to get a...
Great. Please proceed then.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to share. If you can, please confirm you can see the presentation?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
And is it in presentation mode yet?
No, not yet. We're still seeing the slides down the side.
It's just...
There we go. Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you. So I see my colleague is putting up his hand, is raising his hands. Mr. Kuben Govender.
Thank you, Chair, with your permission. I'm not sure if the acting DG would like to make some opening remarks before we proceed. Thank you.
Acting DG, would you like to make some opening remarks for us?
Thank you very much, honourable Chair, and the members of the committee and the members of the civil society. Thank you very much. Yes, I just want firstly to present an apology from the minister and the deputy minister, who are unable to join for this hearing today, but have been part of this hearing in other provinces. So thank you very much. I'm here, want a part of the process. In fact, I just want to give you, Chair, that really will support what the committee has done for the public hearings, to strengthen the bills that really came up through a number of rigorous engagements. So we really appreciate these processes. We'll support the committee, whatever they want us to do, to ensure that at the end of the day, we've got a product that all of us are proud of. As a department and a ministry chair, these bills, you may recall that it came out after the engagement that happened as Zondo Commission to strengthen the issue of employment, issue of public participation, issues of supply chain management. But this focus on purely the issues of recruitment and then movement of people across the three spheres of government. So we are here, I've got a team, yes, you have just indicated, and I assure you that as a department, we support the processes. This is all I can say, Chair, and to underline the apologies from the minister and the deputy minister. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you very much, Acting DG. Okay, if we can then proceed with the amendment bill, please.
Thank you, Chair. So just briefly, the processes that were followed in respect of both the bills, they were published for public comment in the Government Gazette. And in April of 2021, public comments were then received, they were consulted, and the bills were then extensively consulted with the relevant bargaining councils, which is the Public Service Coordinating Bargaining Council in the South African local government bargaining council. Nedlec engagements were also concluded, and the parties in Nedlec agreed to the re drafted bills. The bills were then submitted to Parliament on 31st March 2023. And the Public Service Amendment Bill, in respect of that, the portfolio committee made changes in respect of two clauses, which were reflected in the A-list of the bills. And the amendments were adopted on 14th February 2024 and referred to the National Assembly. And in respect of the Public Administration Amendment Bill, the portfolio committee also made five changes to the clauses in the earlier list. And the bill was adopted on 14th February 2024 and then referred to the National Assembly. The bills were then adopted by the National Assembly with the amendments from the portfolio committee on 27th February 2024 and presented to the National Council of Provinces as per the B-list of bills that were provided. The bills were then revived and referred to the Select Committee on Cooperative Governance and Public Administration on 30th July 2024 by the NCOB following the elections. Then in respect of the Public Service Amendment Bill 2023, the context which was also highlighted by our acting deputy director general. The process to amend the Public Service Act was initiated in 2019. And the provisions, the background and the genesis that gave rise to these amendments arose from the National Development Plan, changes in labour legislation, the objective of the single public administration initiative in terms of the Public Administration Management Act, the professionalization framework that was issued by the National School of Government, as well as the response plan of the President to the Zondo Report. So the bills adopt a holistic approach to public administration at large, and it looks at all the pillars of public administration, which are the citizens. We look at how do citizens benefit from public administration? We looked at government, the second pillar, how does government meet its obligations to the citizens of South Africa? The service, how is the public administration going to render these services to meet the demands of citizens and to ensure that government fulfills its obligations to the citizens? The employees in the public administration, we're looking at what is expected from public servants to ensure that the service is properly rendered to the citizens of South Africa. So regarding the objects of the ball, the main objects of the ball are to provide for the devolution of administrative powers to heads of department while retaining strategic powers with executive authorities. It is to amend the role of the director general in the presidency to support the president, to include functions envisaged by the National Development Plan for an administrative head of the public service. It is to clarify the role of the president and the premier as executive authority in respect of heads of department to address conflicts of interest, to amend section 35 of the Principal Act, to clarify the role of the Public Service Commission in determining the internal grievance procedures, to limit the political rights of heads of department and employees deporting directly to the head of department, to amend section 38 to provide a mechanism for departments to lawfully deduct overpaid remuneration from an employee's salary, and to amend section 42A3 to clarify the meaning of minister. So I will go through all the clauses and give the highlights and also give a short explanation. In respect of clause one, clause one proposes an amendment to section one of the Principal Act, which is the Public Service Act. And it proposes an amendment to the definition of executive authority to clarify the powers of the president and the premier in relation to heads of department. And then also a head of department for ease of interpretation. A new definition has also been added, and that is the definition of political office for purposes of clause 16, which deals with the prohibition of heads of department and employees reporting directly to a head of department from holding political office.
Sorry, can I just ask you just to hold fire for just for two minutes? I've just got a question here in the chamber.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I would like to request if there's any translation services available because they had said, yeah, it's not working.
We're just checking if we've got someone who can do the translation. They're just waiting for them to come back to us. And I'll let you know as soon as we know. So there's English and Afrikaans. Are you wanting it into, is it Kwaasai as well? Okay. Okay, the translators are online, and we're just waiting for them. It should come through any minute. Thank you very much. If we can please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. Then political office is also limited and defined as the position of chairperson, deputy chairperson, secretary, deputy secretary, or treasurer of the party nationally or in a province, region, or other area in which the party operates, or any equivalent position irrespective of the title designated to the position. So in respect of this new definition, I will provide just further elaboration when I come to clause 16 on the slide. Then the next few slides, they, from slide seven to 10, they deal with the powers of the executive authorities and powers of heads of departments. And I'm providing a background to the proposed amendments to clause two, which deals with the powers of the executive authority, and then also clause four, which deals with powers of HODs. So this is just a background to those clauses two and four. So chapter 13 of the National Development Plan of 2012, which deals with building a capable state, made certain proposals based on a diagnostic report, which identified weaknesses in governance structures in public service that led to uneven performance at local provincial and national government. And this includes tensions in the political administrative interface, which causes instability in administration. And the NDP therefore proposed that this political administrative interface must be stabilized and clarified to ensure clear separation between the roles of the political principal and the administrative head. The bill therefore provides for certain administrative powers to then be vested with heads of department to deal with operational matters, while executive authorities are vested with strategic powers. The approach is crucial to achieving an efficient and professional public service. As the executive authority is unburdened with routine day-to-day administrative matters, the executive authorities are then able to focus on the strategic matters and on their constitutional implications, and thereby making decision-making closer to the administration and not dependent on delegations. Accountability is therefore also enhanced if both administrative and corresponding financial responsibilities, as contained in the Public Finance Management Act, are located in one place as heads of department and accounting officers are then better able to align budgeting processes to human resource matters if they have vested powers in respect of both the Public Service Act and the Public Finance Management Act. Then the conflicts and the tensions that sometimes arise between the executive authority and the head of department or accounting officer is less likely to impact on the administration of the department. The head of department or the accounting officer is then ultimately accountable for the output and the performance of the administration. So in respect of the Public Finance Management Act, it must be noted that the accounting officers are already vested with powers with HODs. And in the bill, it is being proposed that the same be done by vesting administrative powers with heads of department.
So maybe just hold on two seconds. If people want to listen to the translation, Afrikaans is on channel two of Kanal Tuya. Of Kanal Tuya. And the Isikosa is on channel six. So you would put this in your ear and then just you'll see there's a little printout on the underneath the mic. If you go to channel two, it's Afrikaans, channel six is the Kosa. Thank you. Thank you, Miss Amidis.
Thank you. So there was a need then to strengthen the provisions to allow for certain checks and balances. To to ensure that there's accountability mechanisms in place. To ensure that there was a balance of power and to limit political interference. Whilst recognizing the need to ensure that public administration. Delivers and governments priorities and the departments must support the executive authorities accountability. And responsibility obligations contemplated in the constitution. So certain checks and balances uh have been considered and included in the bill. And these are the following. The head of department is to be accountable to the executive authority for the administration of the department. And the functional area of responsibility. The head of department must report to the executive authority is and when needed and required, sorry. The head of department was to assist the executive authority to fulfill. The executive authorities accountability obligations in relation to the department and the constitution. And if a head of department refuses of or fails to fulfill a power or duty in is required in terms of the act. Then the executive authority may intervene by taking appropriate steps. To ensure the fulfillment of that power or duty by issuing written instructions or steps to be taken. If the head of department fails to take such steps, then the executive authority must report such failure. To the president or the premier as the case may be. So in respect of of this uh specific uh point. Uh these were one of the amendments that were made by the Portfolio Committee. So initially it read the executive may report such failure to the president or premier. And it has now been made obligatory and it has been amended to read must. So the diagram on this slide deals with executive and administrative powers. The triangle on the left side are all the constitutional obligations that fundamentally rest with members of the executive. And these are coordinating the functions of the state, preparing and initiating legislation. Implementing legislation, developing and implementing policy with a national and provincial level. And performing other constitutional and legislative functions. And these are still vested with the relevant member of the executive. The triangle on the right side of of uh of the slide, it depicts the following. These are all the administrator uh first to the administrative powers. The red fields on the slide are the powers that still vest with the executive authority. In terms of the Public Service Act, which is approving the strategic plan of the department. The dark blue fields are those powers that are really best with the H O Ds in terms of the Public Service Act. Which empowers the H O D to deal with the training of staff, labor relations and discipline management. Then the light blue fields are the powers that will vest directly with H O Ds in terms of the bill. And that is the recruitment and appointment of employees. The remuneration and career incidents of employees. Performance management, dismissal or retirement of employees. Transfer of functions within the department, human resource planning. Organizational structures and establishment and improve uh and inception in approving of R W O Ps. Which is a remuner- remunerative work of of public servants. Um. Close to um. Uh. Sorry, uh close to further uh so following the explanation um or the background that I have given. That brought about the proposed amendments to clause two. Uh it will it amends the section three seven of the Principal Act. And this slide reflects in detail the powers of an executive authority. So in terms of the amendment, it proposes that an executive authority. Is accountable for the department in his or her functional area. Is responsible for approving the strategic plan of the department. Including but not limited to the department's core objectives based on its legislative mandate. The E A shall ensure that the head of department's roles and responsibilities are aligned with the strategic plan of the department. Shall establish clear relationships and facilitate cooperation. Coordination and communication with the head of department and other employees of the department. The A shall also hold the head of department accountable for the administration of the department. And may exercise other powers and must perform other duties conferred or imposed on the executive authority by this act. So um on this slide, um clause uh this is a new provision. Um and uh is one of the checks and balances that was previously referred to in slide uh ten. And it uh it it reads and as was uh explained previously. If a head of department refuses or fails to fulfill a power duty as required in terms of the act. The E A must take uh uh must intervene and by taking appropriate steps to ensure the fulfillment of that power duty. By issuing written instructions to the head of department. Um and if the head of department of uh fails to fulfill that power duty. Then the head of depart- then the executive authorities then uh obliged to report such failure. To the president or the premier as the case may be. So this is a new insertion at uh section uh three nine of the Principal Act. So clause four um now specifically deals with powers of H O Ds. Um and proposes an amendment to section uh seven three P. Um and sets out in details the powers of the H O D, which includes performing all duties necessary to support the. Uh executive authorities responsibilities. Uh and uh to manage the department as well as its employees. Um so seven three B is a uh all of those um provisions. That uh are proposed to be now uh vested with the H O D. And this was uh was referred to in the uh diagram um previously. Um was four also um makes provision for a new provision. Uh regarding the creation of the head of the public service at section seven three C. But so the N D P uh reflects that they should be an administrative head. Who has oversight over operational organizational and administrative matters at both national and provincial level. So Directors General would report on operational organization administrative matters to this national head. And provincial H O Ds will then report to the provincial head. So there is already a provision in the Public Service Act which allows. Uh the D Gs of every office of the premier to play that operational administrative coordinating role. So what was missing in the Public Service Act. And as identified by the National Development Plan was uh that at national level to allow for coordination uh by the D G. So it has been legislated, it's proposed and legislated that the D G in the presidency is that coordinating role. And we've also set out what powers uh they will have at uh section seven three C. And clause four therefore seeks to empower the D G in the presidency to be the secretary secretary to the cabinet. To coordinate, convene and chair the forum of South African Directors General comprising all heads of department. Uh subject to sections eighty five to C and one twenty five to eat the constitution. Will be responsible for intergovernmental relations uh on an administrative level between the presidency. And national departments, provincial departments and government components. Including the coordination of the actions and legislation. Support the president on any matter entrusted or signed to the president by or under this act or any other law. And perform any other function if so requested by the president, subject to the constitution or any other law. So as in the indicated, um a similar provision already exists for the D G in the office of the premier. And uh the current provision uh at section seven thirty C was then amended and is being moved to seven three D. To make provision for the creation of the head of public uh service. Then um following um the explanation on the devolution or vesting of administrative powers. With H O Ds, the affected clauses are clause three, five, six and seven. Clause three deals with former employees and um. Is and uh seeks to amend section three eight uh of the Principal Act, which is being moved to section five nine. And includes a power for the H O D to deal with matters of former employees. That he or she would have been competent to manage when they were employees. Clause five, which deals with appointments in public service. Uh also seeks to amend section nine to provide that the H O D may now appoint uh employees. Clause six uh which deals with the appointment on probation. Uh so proposes an amendment to section thirteen, which allows the H O D then to manage the probation of employees. Clause seven uh dealing with transfers within the public service. Also uh seeks to amend section fourteen to provide that the H O D may deal with the transfer of employees. Um clause eight uh deals with a change in employment capacity. And amend section fourteen A uh to provide for the continuation of employment when a person. Who is already employed by an organ of state is appointed in terms of section nine. Of the Principal Cat, section nine deals with appointments in the public service. Uh an insertion is proposed to retain section fifteen one. Which deals with transfer and supportments from into public service. Which is being repealed by the Public Administration Management Act. To ensure that certain benefits of employees are appointed from other organs of state are protected. Then clauses uh nine, ten, eleven and uh twelve and thirteen. And seventeen also deals with the vesting of uh administrative powers with H O Ds. And also deals with certain technical amendments to the clauses. Uh clause nine uh deals with retirement and retention of services. And it amends uh section sixteen to allow the H O D to deal with a retirement of employees. And also amend section sixteen to substitute the term officer with a defined term employee. Um the um uh the employee is defined in the Public Service Act and the term officer. Um uh was an old term that was uh previously used. It was in uh oversight that is now being uh rectified. And it also uh amends various sections in sixteen uh section sixteen to align. Uh with uh the technical amendment as well as to allow for the vesting of powers with H O Ds. Then clause ten uh all dealing with discipline, it also amend section sixteen B six. To provide a head of department from agreeing to a shorter period of uh notice period for resignation. In instances when employee wishes to resign after notice of disciplinary hearing was given against the employee. Then clause eleven, which deals with termination of employment. Uh it amend section seventeen one A to provide a head of department with powers to dismiss an employee. And it also amend section seventeen three B to provide that the head of department. May approve the reinstatement of an employee who is deemed to be dismissed on good grounds shown. This is a continuation uh of the vesting of administrative powers with the H O Ds and technical amendments. Uh clause twelve uh deals with other remunerative work by employees. And amend section thirty one, two and three to provide that the H O D may now approve altered remunerative work by employees. Clause thirteen um deals with unauthorized remuneration. And that amends section thirty one to be to allow the H O D to now deal with matters relating to authorized remuneration. And it also substitutes the term officer with a detail a defined term employee. And also makes technical amendments to correctly reference. The commission, which is the Public Service Commission, the constitution and and section thirty. Then clause seventeen uh which deals with the remuneration of employees. It also amend section thirty seven two to provide the H O D with powers in respect of uh remuneration of employees. Then uh clause fourteen uh it deals uh with a direction to perform other functions or to act in another post. And it uh pro- uh proposes an amendment to uh section thirty two of the Principal Act. So in respect of uh reassignments. Um uh you know where the executive uh authority has the power to appoint employees. To perform other functions that are not ordinarily assigned to them. The um reassignments are then only permitted within the department. And the power to reassign an H O D is vested with the executive authority. And the power to reassign other employees is then vested with the H O D. Then in respect of acting appointments, that is where the E A has the power to appoint uh employees to act. Um this is only permitted within the department. So employees occupying the post may appoint a person to act unless otherwise determined by the head of department. And in the case of a vacant head of department post. The relevant executive authority responsible for that portfolio. After consultation with the president or premier will make an acting appointment. And in the case of any other vacant post, the head of department may appoint an employee to act. So these um amendments uh just clarify the provisions that already exist in the Public Service Act. Then clause fifteen uh deals with uh grievance of employees. And it seeks to amend a section thirty five five of the Principal Act. Uh section thirty five currently provides that the Public Service Commission. Uh de- will determine the uh grievance procedure for both the internal process. While it is being addressed within the department. And the external process when it is referred to the Public Service Commission. If the department fails to satisfactorily uh deal with that internal grievance. The P S C has then indicated that they should not be involved in the um internal grievance process. Uh which is part of a collective agreement. Uh and that the Public Service Commission will then uh regulate only the external process. And that the minister shall be responsible to determine the internal procedure. And when we refer to the minister, um we refer to the Minister for Public Service and Administration. Then it was sixteen uh which deals with the limitation of political rights. This is a new provision. So if you recall um at the beginning. There was a new uh definition of political office um that was alluded to. Uh just to read uh so clause sixteen seeks to insert a new section thirty six A as a new provision. And to the Public Service Act and it prohibits heads of department and employees deporting. Directly to a head of department from holding an office of authority in a political party, that is political office. So political office is also defined as the position of chairperson, deputy chairperson, secretary, deputy secretary or treasurer of the party nationally or in a province, region or other area in which the party operates or any equivalent position irrespective of the title designated to the position, to the position. The purpose of this prohibition is to manage conflicts of interest between political parties and the administration. Constitutionally, this provision could be justified to the extent that it applies to heads of department and employees reporting directly to a head of department. So in this regard, in it must be noted, just a bit of a background to this provision. Is that in twenty twenty three, the labor court declared that the municipal systems act had overreached when the provision was extended to all employees. The court therefore declared the provision unconstitutional and limited it to municipal managers and those reporting to municipal managers. The Constitutional Court therefore upheld this labor court decision or judgment, sorry, in in their recent judgment, which was handed down on ninth April twenty twenty five. So this judgment therefore reaffirms the position taken in the Public Service Amendment Bill as being correct. So the intention is therefore to ensure that there is a clear demarcation of politics from the administrative roles and responsibilities. Then clause eighteen deals with wrongly granted remuneration and seeks to amend section thirty eight one A of the principal act. This provision was declared unconstitutional by the Constitutional Court and the amendment seeks to align with the provisions of the Basic Conditions of Employment Act and set in place mechanisms to ensure that the rights of employees are not undermined. The bill makes provision for overpaid salaries to be recovered with the written consent of the employee. And when no consent is provided, overpayment may be recovered by way of legal proceedings. And in the event the employee is employed in another department, then provision is made for that debt to be covered by the head of department of the new department. The recovery of overpayments from persons low longer in the employ of the state requires legal proceedings or by deduction against any monies owed by the state. Additionally, clause eighteen was amended by the National Assembly to include parameters aligned to the basic conditions of Employment Act to which deductions had to conform. So the current provision in the Public Service Act, it allows for the accounting officer to make any amount of deduction from the employee's salary to recover that overpaid amount. So following the Constitutional Court decision, these overpaid salaries can only be recovered with the consent of the employee. And the changes at the National Assembly to the bill, they added changes to align with the basic conditions of Employment Act and it put in place conditions that must be fulfilled when determining the amount to be deducted from the salary. So the employee and the accounting officer must agree in writing on the amount of the overpayment. There must be a reasonable period for the repayment of the amount of the overpayment. And the amount to be deducted must be decided by taking into consideration the employee's income and her current financial obligations as well. Then the last clause is clause nineteen dealing with the delegation and it seeks to amend section forty two A to clarify the interpretational challenges in section forty two A three A of the Public Service Act insofar as it relates to the president's power to delegate matters relating to the appointment and career incidents of heads of department. This section is proposed to be amended to replace references to deputy president and minister with a member of cabinet. Thank you. That is the end of my presentation.
Thank you very much. I think we appreciate that. There is another second presentation. I think let's deal with that and then we can get on to the comments. Just hold on two seconds. Yes, sir.
Speaker, I'm going to speak here. I'm going to speak here. My interpreter says, you know, for today. Was it your conference or the latest? The interpreter, I, in a dry, I position, was with the inner career of the enemy. I'm looking for the with your family, yes, over the interpreter, I believe.
Definitely, I'll get on to that. Take that up with the language service office. Right, let's proceed with the next one then. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Chair and honorable members. I'm just double checking if my presentation is visible.
Today's.
Thank you very much, Honorable Chair and members of the legislature, members of the public. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present on the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill. Chair, with your permission, let me maybe mention a few things as a preamble to the presentation. The process that the chair and the members are facilitating is part of the participatory democracy principle enshrined in our constitution, which is section one, one eight one of the constitution that demands all laws or amendments need to be taken through a public participation process. And this bill is in front of the National Council of Provinces and it seeks to amend our original act of the Public Administration Management Act of twenty fourteen. This act, Chair, before I go on, I think let me maybe explain what the Public Administration Management Bill is in a broad nutshell first. Public administration, if I have to summarize it, means three levels of government, its national, provincial and local level of government. And in section seventeen, we'll explain further how we expand to the other entities of the state. Management, simply put, it refers to the process of planning, organizing, leading and controlling resources such as people, our materials, our finances to achieve government goals. So this bill seeks to also look at the extension of the mandate of the minister for the public service and administration. Chair, the minister for for the public service and administration is both the executive authority of the Department for Public Service and Administration. And as the name states, the minister for public service and administration is a minister that has a transversal mandate across the public service, like my colleague have mentioned, the national and provincial. Now this bill is at the administration part, which is an extension. So that is the preamble, Chair. Thank you very much. So this Public Administration Management Act was passed in twenty fourteen. It had almost twenty sections. Thirteen sections of this principal act was already brought into operation in twenty nineteen and since, while seven sections still remain inoperative or not operational. This is due to not having regulations, having difficulties in operationalizing them and some requiring amendments. Hence, Chair, this process of amending the Public Administration Management Act, which we call Palmer for short, was initiated in twenty nineteen. And this and the genesis of this provisions arises as the acting DG has mentioned due to certain recommendations by the N D P, labor legislation and policies. And of course, one of the key objectives was of a single public administration initiative and the professionalization framework that the department is leading at the moment to include some elements of it. And of course, it's responding to some of the recommendations from the Zondo Commission report. So the key objectives of this bill, chairperson and members of the legislature and and members of the public. It seeks to create a public administration that is people centered. And it's also bringing about cohesiveness in the whole public administration to bring about synergy, to bring about effectiveness and efficiency in the functioning of the state or the parts which we're talking about, the administration part. It's also seeking to strengthen the existing legislation to ensure that public service functions and is structured to execute all the lawful policies of our government as contemplated in section one nine seven of the constitution. So it also, and point C, as I I've stressed, we seek to professionalize the public administration. That means the all three spheres of government to ensure that the values and principles enshrined and contained in our constitution in section one nine five are really realized. And finally, the the last objective mainly is to improve state capacity. That is, the employees with the necessary skills and attributes to perform their functions that they are employed to do in the state as well as the capabilities that is to put in stronger systems, structures and processes and governance instruments and technology and innovation to deliver better services to the citizens of all our our citizens in our country and in the province. But Chair, I've tried to simplify the presentation by putting on the left hand side the clauses. So we have all the clauses on the left hand side, starting from one going up to to the end of the presentation. The amendment details, meaning what the amendment seek to do and the actual amendment provision in the act, in the bill that that is in the actual bill for the the technical part of the legislature's proposed legislative changes. So clause one deals with definitions like we found in the Public Service Act. We start with unpacking definitions that generally are misunderstood or lead to different interpretations. So clause one deals with the head of the institution. I think my colleague explained that. It talks about the Labor Relations Act, the Municipal Systems Act. Then what is a national government component, organ of state, organized local government, provincial department, provincial government component, public administration, what is a public entity and what is public service. Most of those definitions are in the Public Service Act, but the the amended provision that I have actually highlighted on the right hand column, which is what is an organ of state. Chair, the original act talked about not doing business with the state. But after due consideration at the department, they've decided to actually expand and talk about an organ of state. And simply put, this is also referred in section sixteen, which I'll talk to later. But let me highlight it here. An organ of state simply means a national department, a government department, a national government component or a provincial government component. It also talks about a public school. It includes a municipality, it includes a public entity or any institution performing a function in terms of the constitution. So this definition exists in the clause, in the amended clause in section sixteen later. Clause two, Chair. It seeks to look at the issue of transfers in the public service. It actually seeks to amend section five of the principal act to provide for transfer of employees across the spheres of government where human resources deficiencies exist or where operational requirements necessitate. I've underlined that because there are certain very clear conditions that are put in in the provision on the right hand column that clearly states you one cannot actually just have transfers in any fashion except as how the 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 bill is 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 actually highlighting. So the initial proposal was to include transfers without consent across public administration where such transfers are needed. But due to consideration of representation by affected employees, we had to include the consent part. So if we look at the right hand column, we're talking about an employee may only be transferred if a reasonable ground exists. So there need to be a determination of the reasonable of the the grounds for for existing firstly. And if an employee suitably qualified, that is another precondition, the qualification, and if the employee requests or consents in writing to be transferred. And finally, with the concurrence of the relevant executive authorities of the transferring and receiving institutions. So those four criteria are embedded in the amended bill. But we also go further in the proposed amendment that is even employees transferred in terms of section one. The transfer must not interrupt the employee's continuity of employment. So we do not interfere with the person's conditions of service and especially the number of years of service which actually affect the pensionable outcome. And finally, the employee may not upon the transfer suffer any reduction in the remuneration and conditions of service unless the employee consents to do so. So that clause of the clause two actually is one of the areas in the principal act the department was unable to actually operationalize as we stand now since twenty fourteen. So this bill, an amendment, will assist in the transfers. So Chair, simply the transfers we're talking about is within the public service, meaning at the national and provincial departments and municipalities and between different municipalities with the consent of the employees. But as I stressed, within the criteria as as highlighted in the in on the the fourth criteria that I mentioned. Chair, clause six seeks to provide for secondments contemplated in section six of the principal act. And this should only occur when it is also operationally justified. This ensures that secondments do not result in deficiencies being created which hamper service delivery within the originating institution. So the employee may be seconded, the proposal in the amendment amended section is if the employee possesses the necessary skills and knowledge. Firstly, the skills and the knowledge for the intended position. If the employer requests for consent to be to be seconded. If the employer requests for consent to be to to be seconded or in the absence of consent. So basically, secondment is a temporary temporary movement of a a staff to a particular post for a particular period of time. In the absent of the consent, after due consideration of any representation by the employee, if the secondment is operationally justified. So that is the amended provision. Clause four, Chair, is the transfer of employees upon transfer or assignment of functions. This clause seek to repeal. Clause four, repeal means to withdraw or to remove from the Principal Act. So it's this clause four seeks to repeal section seven of Palmer to avoid any duplication. So the transfer of functions and transfer of employees affected by the transfer of functions and the legislation across institution is regulated in terms of the Constitution. So also, section seven, as I mentioned, is we are tending to repeal that from from the original act, that is to remove it. Clause five, that is conducting business with the state. Chair, as you were, that there are certain categories of employment or employees in government that are prohibited or prevented from doing business with the state. So in the original act, so this is where the clause come in in terms of the organs of state. As Chair, you were and members of the legislature, this month of April, all senior management managers in government also have to declare their financial interest. And and when they're declaring financial interest, they will also declare if they have companies or if they are doing even business with the state through the declaration. And if they are found to be declaring, these are some of the areas that we put in the amended provisions. So in a nutshell, what we're saying as a department that a a government employee cannot conduct or do business with an organ of a state. And I explained what an organ of state is in the beginning in the definition. It also clarifies that an employee who is a director of a company in terms of the company's act cannot conduct business with the state or the organ of the state. This also includes state-owned companies, private companies, personal liability companies, public company or a nonprofit company for that matter. Also, Chair, it also seeks to clarify that employees appointed ex-official on boards are not construed within the scope of the prohibition or the prevention of doing state. So let me explain this point here. To avoid unintended consequences, we've included a provision that the minister will prescribe that certain transactions between an employee and an organ of state which are are remunerative but not for profit and which are necessary for the functioning of the state do not constitute conducting business with an organ of the state. Let me explain this area. Chair, there are certain categories of work one might be required to assist the state. Like, for example, teachers who mark metric papers or metric teachers who teach metric. They are requested end of the year to support the state or the government or the provincial government to mark metric examination papers. And they collect a stipend at the end for their time and the holidays that they use to to actually assist in the marking. That is one area amongst many other areas. The other area that comes to mind is that when we have elections, there are certain government officials might be requested through the IEC to assist with the elections and the election process during there and they collect a stipend. So those are some of the areas, but the minister through the through a regulation will actually highlight or 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 mention which are the other categories. The other one comes to mind is that if I am working in government and I am requested by the executive to sit on a board as an ex-official member just to represent the interest of government in the board. And that would might be considered also not, it would be not part of the prohibition. But this is, in a nutshell, the spirit of this legislation and amendment is trying to make sure that government officials don't use their position or authority while working for government to get inside information and then do business with government at the same time. And it also gives them also, there is a contravention there on the number three, that this is an offense and any person found guilty of this offense is liable for a fine or an imprisonment for a period not exceeding five years or both such fine and imprisonment. And it also, we go further to state that it is construed as a mysterious misconduct in government, which may result in the termination of the employment of that employer. So that is clause five, Chair. Thank you very much. Clause six, this is a new clause to con, the conduct of employee of an employee or a former employee participating in awarding work to service providers, which is section eight A. Chair, this is also trying to actually prevent people or employees who awarding of contracts to service providers in particular. That is, people who set the criteria for the award, people who are evaluating or adjudicating an award, people who recommend or approve the award, people who participate in the activities of all the above activities we mentioned need to have what we call a cooling off period, a twelve-month cooling off period to prevent them from awarding contracts, then leaving and then joining those companies. So there is a twelve-month cooling off period, meaning allowing the time for people who are part of these criteria that we mentioned in the in the new clause to to be prohibited from either joining that service provider or engaging with that service provider or even sitting on the board of that service provider. So this, Chair, is simply trying to prevent what we call throwing the javelin in simple terms. Some people in government, when they're sitting in in these areas of authority and have power, they throw the javelin and they leave, they resign, they go catch the javelin on the other side. That is where the where they have awarded large sums of money. So there are certain very clear criteria, as we said. And we also have provisions put for a service provider in number three. A service provider may not within twelve-month period engage an employee to provide any service to the service provider or an employee or employ this this employee or appoint the employee to a board or of the service provider for payment in money or in kind or grant any form of gratuity to that employer. So there is this provision is both for the employee, as you see in section two, and for the service provider in section three. So this provision is trying to prevent people who are presently working or people who are left the employee of the state because some people might be on contract and the contract ends and then they award a contract before the contract ends and then they go and work for that company that they awarded the contract to. So Chair, just to highlight, there is a very serious, this is considered a very serious offense and a a person or a company can be liable to a fine exceeding, not exceeding one million rand, which may be adjusted by the Minister of Justice from time to time. This for now is the provision is the one million. And as as the provision states that at from time to time, if this clause is abused, the Minister for Justice can adjust this to much higher amount if if it's abused. We continue with clause six. And I think I highlighted that part of section seven in terms of the contravention in terms of it being, they will be liable for a fine or of exceeding, not exceeding one million. Chair, we go into clause seven. This is also a new clause. This is for, it's for the purposes of this section. This amendment is clause seven, seeks to clarify the current provisions in respect of a definition of an employee. So remember, my colleague just talked about changing the term official to employee. So it also goes to clarify that an employee is also a person performing similar functions in a municipality also. So it extends the definition and it also extends in the Public Administration Management Amendment Bill that it extends it to the municipality. Clause eight, it is about capacity development by institutions, which is section 10-2 of the Principal Act. So clause eight, Chair, seeks to amend section 10-2A of the Principal Act, meaning the original act, to provide that departments must within their available budget provide for compulsory training that is directed by the minister to address developmental needs of certain categories of employees. Now, Chair, let me just take some time to explain this. The Minister for Pub, for the for the Public Service and Administration might, time to time, through regulations, identify particular developmental needs for particular the categories of employees in government, either at 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 different levels of government. Let's say, for example, if I am a deputy director in government and if I intend to apply for a position as a senior manager in government, I have to go for compulsory NUKELA training, which is a compulsory training for any senior manager as a prerequisite before one can actually be appointed at a senior management level. So there are, that is one type of training. There are other forms of training for different category of workers. There's various different compulsory trainings. There's a whole list of them for different categories of employees. So simply put, this clause is trying to seek to get the departments to beside the the education and training budget that is set by the Skills Development Act. We are trying to to say that the departments must try to budget for these categories of compulsory training to improve the skills. Another category can be, Chair, as 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 you were, as the, as knowledge changes, skills are needed through this knowledge change and to bring about people to be brought about on board with the skills like maybe for AI or artificial intelligence, for example. It could be at some stage that they might need to be a need for people to actually, certain categories, especially researchers in government to actually go through, to actually assist them to not only fast-track their research capabilities, but also to use AI and also to acknowledge and and reference it in the research amongst other things.
Mr. Governor, if I could just ask you, the buses for the public will be departing in forty minutes, so we are a little pressed for time. And we still have to look at the public comments. We could maybe just do a relatively high-level overview because there are still another two sessions today as well where you'll be presenting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I will do. Thank you. So Chair, in clause nine, the highlighted areas on the right is the replacements aspect, the National Assembly provisions. The National Assembly Portfolio Committee, look at the, this bills, remember, as we said. And they've made in some inclusions, that is, this this National School of Government, while it is going to be retained as a national department, must, may also conduct assessments and may also issue awards in terms of certifications and proficiency awards amongst other things. As you were, Chair, that is a National School of Government and there is provincial schools of government to focus on skills development and training for members of the Public Service and Administration. So this clause actually extends to also training to municipalities and even the public entities. Clause ten, Chair, is to repeal section twelve of Palmer, that is, just to remove this so that there is no conflict in the act. And it's insofar, it's directing that it implies to municipalities that the minister must act in consultation with the minister responsible for local government after consultation with organized local government, that is, SAGA. Clause eleven is compulsory education required for employment. That is, to amend section thirteen one of Palmer to remove the unnecessary burden placed on cabinet. This one, Chair, the original Principal Act wanted cabinet to determine these prerequisite mandatory training. This act is now saying the Minister for Public Service and Administration, who is in charge of training for the public service through the National School of Government, should take this responsibility. Clause twelve is the minimum norms and standards. This is, this is also to repeal section sixteen two of the Public Administration Management Act in terms of bringing, giving the powers to the minister to issue norms and standards in respect of the promotion of values and principles through regulations instead of consulting with all different executive authorities, which becomes almost impossible. So on the right-hand side is, this one, Chair, must mention, the Minister for the Public Service in terms, in terms of section three of the Public Service Act can set norms and standards for the public service. And in section sixteen, he can set these norms and standard for the whole of public administration. And it deals with a proposed amendment there to issue regulations for values and principles. Section thirteen is to remove and its members in the section. Chair, in the original or the Principal Act, it talks about the minister must actually prescribe the powers of the Office of Standards and Compliance and its members. This provision states there is no need for and its members because once you prescribe the office of the office, it actually technically means it includes its members because you represent the office as a whole. Like you have the Office of the AG, the Office of the Public Protector amongst other offices. Clause fourteen, the removal of disparities in public administration. This is a new provision. It's a new clause revised also by the public, the National Assembly. Chair, this clause just seeks to try to manage better the whole public administration, specifically categories of workers who don't fall under the bargaining councils, that is, category two to twelve that the bargaining councils deal with in terms of conditions of service. This category, this this, excuse me, this clause seeks to deal with categories outside the bargaining chamber and better manage the the disparities that we find in in municipalities in particular. in, in municipalities in particular and other public entities for that matter. So it seeks to actually give the powers to the minister after consultation with the minister responsible in local government and finance to set norms and standards to establish upper limits amongst other things. It also goes further to propose an intergovernmental forum to establish a committee of ministers to include SAGA, premiers and deputy ministers to bring about strengthening the, the processes for determining conditions of service, like salaries amongst other things. So this clause does not seek to interfere with any processes established in terms of the bargaining processes at the moment. It seeks to strengthen from the government side, bringing in other elements of, 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 of people which were not involved in the committee before and, and strengthen this process. I dealt with that. So also it, it goes further to say no executive authority may enter into any form of collective agreement in respect to conditions of service with financial implications to determine, or determine them for employees without the mandate of this committee. So it strengthens the mandate of the committee and gives it more, you have to consult and engage with them before approval. This is the same clause. Fifteen also, it's a new clause. It also falls, it, it, it's almost related to the same. It talks about actually passing regulations there that will actually force the Minister for Public Service to engage with the Minister for Finance and Local Government before issuing any regulation that might affect the municipalities. Clause sixteen is just a technical clause and seventeen is just the name change. Chair, I thank you very much for your patience and the committee and the members of the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Governor. We really appreciate that. Okay, we now get on to the issue of the verbal submissions. We do have a submission here from the Public Service Reform Programme. And we are told that we're going to get, who's going to speak to it is Ms. Yolisa Makazi. Is she here?
Yes, Chairperson. Thank you. Good morning. I'm connected.
Morning, morning. Please go ahead and give us an overview of your, your comments that you have submitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairperson. I have submitted a written, a full written submission yesterday, so I will not take much of your time. But we, I work for the New South Institute and we have been participating in the process of the public hearings, including the processes before that. We are a policy and research institution that is operating throughout South Africa. And we have just mainly two issues that we would want to raise. Firstly, we support the amendments that are being proposed, particularly in respect to a devolution of administrative powers to the heads of departments, which is clause four, as well as limitation of political rights. We just want to acknowledge that we, we understand that perhaps the NCLAD government in nineteen ninety-four might have inherited a civil service that could not be trusted to implement its policies. As a result, the political executive was given wide discretion and influence in matters of public administration. And they were also given wide powers to recruit public servants and to intervene in operational decisions. And our argument is that thirty years later into our democracy, the democracy is stabilizing and some of the transformation objectives have been achieved by the government. And that we also have lessons from the state capture amongst other, that point to an emergence of self-serving interests. And therefore, there is a need for a clear separation of roles and responsibilities between politicians and administrators. In any case, these operational responsibilities were never in terms of public administration theory, part of the rules of the political principles. However, understanding the context and our past, perhaps it was necessary at that particular time to do that. And we've outlined a detailed historical context, but more importantly for this conversation is to also highlight that the National Development Plan, chapter thirteen, is quite clear on the need to stabilize political administrative interface and professionalize the public service. And we see these amendments as part of that effort to professionalize the public service. Currently, Cabinet has what it calls Framework for Minimum Delegations, where this was approved by Cabinet and there's a directive that was issued by DPSA, by Minister for Public Service in twenty fourteen, where political principals, ministers and emcees, for instance, can delegate, may delegate to the heads of departments. However, this delegation is discretionary because obviously the legislation gives them the powers directly. So as it happens, once there's a difference of opinion of use between the minister and the HOD or the EMC and the HOD, in most instances, the first thing the minister does is to withdraw the delegations. And this results in instability in the public service. And we, we, therefore, we support the, the amendment on the basis that we need to deal with this instability in the public service. And we need to show, to ensure that there is separation of responsibilities between the political principals as well as the heads of departments in the public service. And we have provided a detailed motivation, Chair. I'm not going to spend time on it. The last point I want to raise is on the limitations on the political rights of HODs and those reporting directly to them. That's on clause sixteen of the amendments. And we, we want firstly upfront to acknowledge that political rights, including the right to join and participate in a political party, are fundamental rights which form the basis of South Africa's democratic dispensation and are crucial for our system of multi-party democracy, which is entrenched in section one D of the Constitution. The proposed limitation of political rights in clause sixteen is sufficiently restrictive and narrow, applicable only to accounting officers and HODs and those who report directly to them, accounting officers or HODs and those who report to them. This, in our view, takes forward the debate on separation of roles as accounting officers will focus on business of running the department and not be decision makers in political parties whilst running the office because that may result in a conflict of interest, whether it's real or perceived at this stage. We're also happy to note that the recent judgment by the, or decision by the Constitutional Court in relation to the local government on a similar matter, these, these amendments are in, are in alignment with that judgment that has been given by the Constitutional Court. So we don't think there will be any other challenges in respect to that. And these categories of employees, which is the HOD and those reporting to them, may still vote, support political parties, be members of political parties and even participate in activities of political parties. So this prohibition is very narrow and does not apply to any other employees. And we hope that there will be no interest to extend it to any other employees as it may interfere with the fundamental constitutional right of employees. Chair, the NSI supports, as I said, the proposed legislations in relation to the political limitations as well as the administrative power devolution. We also note that as these administration powers are being devolved and vested with the heads of departments, it is important to have the checks and balances. And these are included in the amendments in clause two. And this check and balances, in our view, strengthen the role of the political principals to have oversight over the heads of departments. And there shouldn't really be any fear that the devolution of responsibilities will lead to a, a, a situation of unaccountability by the heads of departments. I think it's provided sufficiently that that oversight is strengthened and there is accountability expected. But also the heads of departments are required to support the heads of depart, the, the political principals to also meet their responsibilities and their functions in terms of strategy, in terms of policy and in terms of constitutional obligations. Chair, on this note, I would like to thank you for the opportunity and the provincial parliament for the opportunity to be able to present today. And I do hope that I, I have managed to stay within the time allocation. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Ms. Makazi. We appreciate that. Okay, right. Are there any comments on this bill, not on other matters, from people in the chamber at this point? Do we have any hands of comment? I've got a gentleman here to my left. I have a, a person at the end. That's one. That's two. Any more? Three. Okay, I'm going to start with the gentleman in the red beret, then I'm going to move to the lady at the back. And then I'm going to come forward to the gentleman in the black hat. Thank you. We'll be taking that up with them. Thank you very much. Ma'am at the back in the black dress?
Good day, everyone. I'm Estreisy van Veldroof, present High Ops and I present Support Group and Veldroof Work. I just want to read out loud my comment. While I appreciate the focus on professionalism and fighting corruption in these bills, I think it is absolutely crucial that we as a community have real ways to see if these changes are actually making a difference in our daily lives. For example, will these new rules lead to a quicker response when a report problem with our water or our electricity? Will we see more visible improvements in the service we rely on? People die on the streets awaiting on ambulances that either come or don't. It's not enough to just have good laws on paper. We need clear ways to measure if things are getting better on the ground. The government needs to tell us how they will track the impact on these bills, on our communities and how we can hold them accountable if we don't see, if we don't see change. And, and on the ground level, the NPOs is doing good work but don't get contracts to assist with grassroots level services that pays government officials that, that, that they don't want to do, to work on the ground. Thereby us in Veldroof is also a problem. Thereby the clinic. If the people go to the clinic early in the morning, especially now in the winter, there's no shelter for them. That is what we need. We, we come to this polls and we hear what you're doing on paper. And here's another clause that you want to give this budget for training for people who are in senior positions. Why do we, do we have budget for training if a people get a senior positions? Our colored people, they hold us back. We don't get jobs because of triple BBE. We sit with a lot of qualified people here in this room. They're highly qualified, but they don't get jobs. They do NPO jobs. They must do a, a lot of paperwork to get funding. Thereby us, as the ladies is busy now in, in the school, she must wait for funding just to give thirty people children bread. So I'm, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, what do I say? I don't agree with this bill.
Thank you very much. It's the importance of public participation as we get everybody's view. I have the gentleman in the black hat in front.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Oh, can I ask question? Can I speak my language? Because my English is not English. When the house on the to the luna band. In the way since the clinic can support man's abana abana batala, but they figure pa. One language, Abanga Zivaya. So she had to allow to follow me and to take his into the clinic back on a bond, Abana Tete Luminza, La Peso, The Free. Yeah, and this is a trailer that could in the bank, but I probably do all my back, but I like. Because in the city, John, and then I will call you, please, so come as far as better. Who, 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 who is a girl, I'm a spala, and so I could ask a photograph. I could go and do it, and I'm a spala, and do it, and I could do it in Kuku Makka. She's saying again, I'm a la mas para la para, I could go and about you, I'm a seventy-five thousand one months. Both full, I'm doing on a gap, I'm getting, but I was a part of a land on the Malinger. So I tell her, okay, I'm not going to let me tell her for, I'm a spala, I was a photograph. Uh, ukulume ndinga ngakamlandelele amtsonge minzu ukwapilizo lenzegayo payo.
Thank you very much. A lot of these issues are social development issues. What one can do is one can direct them towards social development. What municipality was the issue? Okay, all right. We'll just make a note of that. Thank you very much. Then I have a lady in a brown dress and then someone at the back. Can I just remind people this is actually about the public administration submission? I realize that people have issues they want to air. I completely understand that. But please try to limit yourself to the issues on this bill, please. Ma'am, sitting in the front, are you right? And then just press your mic.
Now, I just wanted to ask something. At the end of the day, they talk about employing government officials for areas that we don't even see the government officials during the day, only maybe when it's politics. So I wanted to know, is it possible that it can be included in the bill that there is immediate public services yahbdis in our communities? Because people don't even have transport to go to a public service. There is great services avail, but it's too far for the people to go there. So that is for me a major point that there's no public services yahbdis in the area. And if you go to services that is avail in the area that you are, the government officials think they owe you, it's free. So they don't give you that service that you truly need. It is like they are, it's free, so go sit there, wait, lines are long. And I think you guys must look into that, please.
Are you from, are you from the Veldroof area?
I'm from the West Coast, but I'm currently staying for five years in Cape Town. I'm the founder of the NPO HIOBS. This is my colleague.
Okay.
So we're doing a tremendous work in the community. By the end of the day, I'm very equal with compliancy. So my NPO is compliant. I can apply for funds. Then there's someone that is doing for years brilliant work like Yalders. They don't even get funds for soup kitchen, only because they're not illiterate enough to do the paperwork. So I am there in my area, but who's going to fund me to assist the NPOs to let them become compliant as well? And I make me avail all the time, but government won't fund me to assist my people in my area.
Okay, we'll make sure that goes into submission. Thank you very much. And thanks to everyone with the NGO sector. It's a really, really valuable sector. Are there any other comments? There are some refreshments available. Okay, yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I'd just like to know. I'd easily like to, I don't know what. Okay, I'd just like to know if you want to apply for a new job, a higher position. Why must you, the government pay for you to be, become better employed? I think it's your own responsibility to better yourself. Why must governments help pay? We are, the government haven't got money, but they want to increase our vet. It is going to be affecting the poor, the senior citizens. It is getting only a two thousand rand where they can cut by excluding those people. They want to be employed. Let them pay for their own qualification, their own training. That's all I should say. Thank you.
Just switch off your mic? Okay, so thank you very much. Just as it happens yesterday, the government did announce that they're not going to proceed with that vet increase. So that is one good victory for the people of South Africa. Okay, anybody else? Okay, yes, sir?
Okay, Danki. Unzeta resda i kwesti gekray. Unzka nani, inisimissi sit? So untu, unska ni veil di antwadege. Ni uns is iso ver di NCP, di nationala government. So unsal di frana letusti. Da i danki.
Oh, okay, Chair. Di, ndinengaga Chair. Kulenda kute twangendose missebeens. Kute twangendose tibene ne malba intex nendo nsonge londo le. But igengo inga giyama pikoyo. Ukulume ndospete yo. Akayi vilisi imisebeens. Uulucha. Isisita zet ne prataset uzhlela makay. Bezhlela makayanze. Ba fundile, banet diploma, banet titri, banepachela. Abanye, baneski. But ukulume nde akayi zindlela yoba ma bashebeens. So, ndiaytrela ayomna. Ukulume ndospete yo. Indoba makavese ama tubemi sebeens. Ukuvenza ama tubumsebeens ukulume nde. Funeka kunseki sapa koma spala ababa pete i wat. Indoba imisebeens ya vela because obunga ya kui luxines talakuzongo. Ozaufika thousand, thousand abantu. Ihlebe kaka melilanga. Because umsebeenza ukoko ilizo ispilakolo. And as ya asba isatu indonesobumsebeenzonge. Siyatrela gesululucha singa abandana ban, indoba ukulume nde makavelise imisebeenza ukwasbanatispangele sisa osprokusa makayawetu. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you very much. You'll also take that on board. Okay, in closing, I just want to find out, the acting DG, have you got any concluding remarks, sir? Okay, right. We have run out of time. As I said, there are refreshments and the buses will be leaving, I'm told, at half past ten downstairs. So if you go out of the door, down the passage, there are people there who have got refreshments for you in boxes for you to take home. I want to thank you very, very much. Bye-bye, Danki. Thank you, Inkors, for everything which you've done, for being here today. We really do appreciate it and together we make democracy stronger. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.